...August 11th, and we'll have a, do the pledge, Rick, do you want to lead us, please? Okay, well, we this evening have a special presentation. We have a proclamation honoring Mohan Vidam of Halcyon Systems for SBA Veteran Small Business Award. If you'd like to join me up at the podium, please. Okay, certainly honored to have you here this evening, and let me present this proclamation. Whereas Mohan Vidam, founder, chairman, and CEO of Halcyon Technology Solutions, Inc., an advanced IT consulting firm located in Dublin, is an exemplary corporate citizen with business and personal values that have advanced the city of Dublin's community mission through service and strong business ethics. And whereas Halcyon has received several other prestigious awards, including the business first 2013 Corporate Carrying Award for their work assisting veterans, Mohan was awarded the U.S. Small Business Administration's 2014 Veteran Small Business Champion Award for founding and implementing Halcyon's Veterans Workforce Development Program. Launched on Veterans Day 2011, the program provides free IT training to military veterans and assistance in finding positions where these individuals can use their newly-acquired skills to be a vital part of a corporate team. To date, thirty-eight veterans have been trained in seven-week sessions focusing on basic software development skills, software testing methodology, and test script development. And whereas this Veterans Workforce Development Program continues to successfully address Bureau of Labor Statistics data showing that veterans age eighteen to twenty-four have had a national unemployment rate as high as twenty-two percent, Mohan's work through the program not only provides initial training, but continues to support graduates through job placement, continued guidance and mentorship, assistance in obtaining industry-standard certification, and technical support for the first twelve months of a job assignment. Whereas Mohan's extensive community service has significantly benefited the Dublin community and advanced the city's mission, Mohan actively volunteers with organizations such as Life Care Alliance's Meals on Wheels, the Dublin Food Pantry, and the Salvation Army. Moreover, Mohan has made several humanitarian trips to India advancing various efforts such as improving access to fresh water and prosthetic limbs for children in need. Mohan is also an active member of Dublin's AM Rotary Club and was named Rotarian of the Year in 2013. Now therefore I, Michael H. Keenan, Mayor of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council to hereby proclaim Friday, August fifteenth, as Mohan Vidam Day in the city of Dublin in recognition of his service to military veterans and extensive contributions to service organizations in the city of Dublin and abroad.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, and thanks to Mike Larry and the economic development team and the city council to invite us. And my name is Mohan Vidam, and I would like to thank my team, Sanjay Duddani, he's the president of the company, and Alan Day, he's CFO of our company and is a veteran also. And with all our team effort, we were able to do this training for the last two and a half years, and we're still doing it. And we're also diversifying our outreach to veterans by not only training them in IT, but also we're on the verge of training them in non-IT and recruiting veterans in northern Ohio, southern Ohio, in addition to central Ohio. So we are very passionate about veterans, and we make every effort to hire veterans for our staff before we hire, you know, anyone else. So I'm very thankful to God for everything that I've been given, and thanks to this country for everything that I've got. And I'm a very proud American citizen, and so what we're doing is patriotic and altruistic in nature, and will continue to help the veterans. So thanks again to everyone.
Okay, this brings us to the portion of our program, citizen comments. Mr. Maurer? Welcome.
Your Honor, members of council and members of city governance, I have both bad and good things to say about your actions in the past couple of several weeks. You ever heard the expression, ill-earned gain? Ill-I-L-L, earned-E-A-R-N-E-D, gain-G-A-I-N. You know, I was annoyed to see that the very brilliant discrediting I've done of an organization that you gave, that you gave again thousands of dollars. And I'm referring, of course, to the university coaches of football, who were here again. And I understand the justification for them being here was that the Dublin Hotels made tons of money on it. Now, I guess I should also, in the interest of truth in advertising, explain, and I'll give you that I'm hypocritical about this, there's an aspect of hypocrisy in me on this. The other night I watched Peyton Manning on David Letterman's show, and he exhibited equality, which I admire no matter where I find it. And it was this. He explained, first of all, that his broken neck had been welded and was in perfect condition, so to speak, but that there was a, that he had a nerve problem, a stinging in his throwing arm. And he vowed that he was not going to play until and unless that nerve was cured, unless that part of his anatomy was fixed. So he worked and worked probably harder than most people on earth do, and finally got it out of his arm, the throwing arm was there. And to demonstrate it, David Letterman had a sequence of about ten or fifteen taxicabs out on the street go by, about twenty feet from Peyton Manning, at about twenty-five to thirty miles an hour, with all the windows closed except the rear window of passengers, which was open. And he had a barrel of footballs. And as these cabs drove by, twenty-five to thirty miles an hour, he threw one after the other right through the window to broadcast to the world he was quite ready. Now, the good thing, you also, I have gathered, gave a considerable amount of money to the Dublin Arts Center because of a display which is to occur soon, and that is Eddie Adams' photos of the Vietnamese war. Now, something happened after the, during and after the Vietnamese War, partly because of the bitter, bitter division in the country and the confusion about it, and at the mixed reactions that the veterans got when they came home from being spit at and otherwise mishandled, but also some were well-treated. But anyway, something happened after the, during and after that war, which has happened in no country of warfare ever, from Caesar's legions down to the present. And what happened was that for the first time, the thing that the power center and all the wars from Caesar's legions on has been to keep above all any knowledge or any picture of actual warfare away from the home front, because it might be disheartening, it might cause a break. So the war did that. And it let one see warfare where it is, where limbs are flying, guts is flowing, brains are bashed out. Soldiers are crying for help to medics coming by, young recruits are calling their mothers. All of that can now be seen, and that is one of the byproducts of the Vietnamese War. And, and, let's see, over time, well, you guys were an hour late.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. We were. Okay, we have Mr. Neus signed up. Would you like to come to the podium?
Hi, my name is Dave Neus. I'm resident of Galloway, Ohio. I attended, or tried to attend, the Dublin Irish Festival on Sunday last. And for the second year in a row, I was denied access because I chose to legally, openly carry a handgun. I spoke with the law director's department at length last year, and we corrected many issues, many misconceptions. And we got so close. We had some bad laws on the books that council was not even aware of. Council did an excellent job in getting those taken care of, repealed and amended as needed. And we got so close this time, but there was a sign that said specifically, you know, you, if you have your concealed handgun license, you can come in as long as it's concealed. If you have a concealed handgun license, there's no requirement that it be concealed. It can be openly carried. The concealed handgun license merely gives you some more options. We're within a thousand feet of a school, we're in a school zone. You cannot carry a firearm without a concealed handgun license, but there's no law that says you have to have that firearm concealed. Ohio Revised Code 9.68 says that municipalities can't make rules regarding the possession or carrying of firearms. So the city was violating that particular ordinance. Officer Paez was quite efficient. The city may have expected me to come back. He did have in his hand, ready for me, a form that said, these are the reasons for what we chose to do. Unfortunately, while I agree with every single item on that list, none of them provided the authority for the city to prohibit open carry. My question tonight is, why did the city do that? And if there's any way I can help clarify whatever misunderstanding was there, I'd like to do so.
Is that all you have to say?
That's it.
Okay, well, thank you for your input. We appreciate it. That brings us on to the consent agenda. Does any council member have anything they'd like to remove? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the actions for the five items listed on the agenda. Want to call the roll, please?
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Very good. Ordinance seventy-three dash fourteen?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.382 acre more or less fee simple interest from St. John's Lutheran Church for the property located at 6177 Rings Road for the Avery Road widening, Rings Road east through Warner Temple Road Phase Two project, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hammersmith?
Members of council, you have before you this evening the acquisition which you heard on first reading at your last meeting at 6177 Avery Road, property located at the northwest, or southeast corner of the intersection, presently owned by St. John's Lutheran Church. The acquisition is necessary for the improvement of Avery Road and also Rings Road to the east. Presently, the structure is used as a residential property. It originally was built in 1837 and functioned as a schoolhouse for several years, known as Sandy's School District. Staff recommends that the acquisition this evening at the appraised value of $75,000. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions?
Is that, is it going to be torn down immediately?
Most likely. I think that would be our plan, yes. It's what we've done with the other structures that we've acquired.
Would there be any historic excavation done of the site? I was just curious. I have no idea if there's even anything of value, or if anybody, I don't know who would do it, but I was just curious.
We had not discussed that, so we could consider that and what the value of that might be.
One of the things we did look at, and we talked with Tom Holton and Herb Jones, and that they're, they are going to go out and take a look to make sure that there's not anything internally that could be preserved that, from a historical standpoint, that they may want.
It's been converted to a residence for some time, so.
Yes.
Paul, one, one thing, going back to my township days in the early eighties, and this was from Ted Coltenback, who was around in the thirties or forties or what have you. He claims that that cemetery boundary exceeds the boundary of those fence lines, and you might want to, I don't know if there's a way to do any kind of surveying or find out, but you might want to be careful in that ground in front, to make sure that the cemetery didn't spill over into that area after it was fenced off years later, because that goes way, way back.
Understood. As you know, the city owns the cemetery presently. Our intent would not, would be to not get any really further passed in this area. If you look where the right-of-way line is presently, so we would try and certainly avoid any of this area.
It came up when we did some improvements there
Okay.
years ago, and it could be hearsay, but be, just be advised.
Good to know.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, Jenny?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes, and on the ordinance?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance seventy-four dash fourteen?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.020 acre more or less temporary easement from Thomas T. Fox and Jane E. Fox for the property located at 6199 Dublin Road for the construction of a shared-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase Three project, and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Ms. Grigsby?
Yeah, this is, this ordinance and the next and one later on are for the extension of the Dublin Road South bike path, where we completed the first two phases over the last two years, and we continue to work with the property owners. And this ordinance provides for the acquisition needed from the Fox property for the appraised value of $400.
Very good. Any questions?
No.
I'll make the motion to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency.
Second.
Okay, on the motion?
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance seventy-five dash fourteen?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.020 acre more or less permanent easement, a 0.006 acre more or less temporary easement, and a 0.009 acre more or less temporary easement from Jane E. Fox for the property located at 6193 Dublin Road for the construction of a shared-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase Three project, and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Marcia?
Again, this is for the Dublin Road South bike path, and the, we have entered into discussions with the property owner, and they agrees for the, agreed with the appraised value of $3,875, and we recommend passage this evening.
Very good. Any other questions? Motion to dispense with public hearing? Yes, I'll vote to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency. Second?
Second.
On the motion, Jenny?
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Vice Gerber, Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes. And on the ordinance?
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes. Ordinance seventy-six dash fourteen?
Establishing a new Bridge Street District zoning district, BSD Scioto River Neighborhood District, and related code amendments for the BSD Scioto River Neighborhood to zoning code sections 153.058, 153.059, 153.060, 153.062, 153.063, and 153.065 of the Dublin codified ordinances.
Okay, do you want, do we want to read ordinance seventy-seven as well before we go on? Staff has to combine these two, ordinance seventy-six and seventy-seven. So do we need to read seventy-seven first?
Yes.
Okay. Jenny?
Rezoning twenty-three parcels totaling approximately 66.97 acres from BSC Office Residential, BSC Residential, and BSC Commercial Districts to BSD Scioto River Neighborhood District and BSC Public District.
Okay, I'll introduce, I'll introduce it. Introduction, and staff report, Ms. Ray.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for allowing me to present both of these together. As both of these code amendments and areas rezoning are very closely related, we thought it made more sense to just present them both together. Just quickly, give a brief overview of what I planned to present as part of my brief staff comments. Wanted to give a little bit of background, some context, just explaining how the zoning districts came before council, where they initially started, when the area rezoning first came before council back in 2012. Then I'll cover both of the proposed ordinances, and then the recommendations to actions, of course, will be required. This, of course, is a graphic that most of you should be familiar with. This is, of course, the vision plan that was included in the 2010 British Corridor Vision Report. Soon after the vision report moved forward, we kind of moved away from there. We looked at the general land use recommendations for the various portions of the Bridge Street District in terms of land use, as well as building heights and densities. And from there, that informed the creation of Bridge Street District zoning districts. And we went parcel by parcel through the Bridge Street District to apply the new zoning district designations to each piece of property. There were a few special areas in the Bridge Street District that had important transformational opportunities in particular. So for these areas, we created something called Neighborhood Zoning District Designations. So the two areas outlined in red, both on the west and east sides, of course, my laser pointer isn't working, on the east and west sides of the Bridge Street District, received the special zoning designation because they were under consolidated land ownership at the time of the original rezoning in 2012. And also, they had, again, the most potential for the special anchor developments that we expected to see coming forward in the near future. And following the initial rezonings to the Bridge Street Districts in early 2012, the city acquired several strategic properties located along the river corridor needed for public infrastructure improvements. And the attention on this area advanced further in late 2012, when city staff was directed by council to, again, focus Bridge Street District planning efforts mainly on the Sider River Corridor as kind of the next step for implementation. And around the same time, a development entity, Crawford Whong Development Partners, began assembling much of the land within the Sider River Corridor. So as planning progressed in this area, it was noted that unlike the property ownership at the time of the original Bridge Street District area rezoning, ownership circumstances would now permit the creation of a more unified zoning plan to create that more intensely-developed, coordinated mixed-use environment envisioned by the Bridge Street District zoning regulations, designed to be implemented through that same process. And again, so certainly, given the size of the vacant property in that area, that's an approach we would have recommended back in 2012, had the ownership pattern been a bit different at that time. So creating the new Bridge Street District, Scioto River Neighborhood District allows the Bridge Street zoning regulations to better fit the intent, again, of that larger unified development that we anticipate for the Scioto River Corridor area. And this approach facilitates these elements, elements for development to be addressed more comprehensively and in a coordinated fashion through a single zoning district, rather than the three separate zoning districts that have their own unique combinations of permitted uses and development standards. Okay, so moving on into the proposed zoning code amendment and area rezoning. This on the screen here is a quick summary of the proposed zoning code amendment, ordinance seventy-six fourteen. The most significant aspect of the proposed zoning code amendment is the creation of a brand-new zoning district, the Scioto River Corridor Neighborhood District. As part of the neighborhood standards mirroring the other neighborhood districts and zoning districts we've included in the code, also includes a conceptual graphic that coordinates with the recommended zoning for the Scioto River Neighborhood District. We have the next page here. And this is a brief overview of the standards for the Scioto River Neighborhood District. There's also a few technical amendments included as part of the proposed code update, such as adding the new neighborhood district to various use tables and things of that nature, as well as eliminating the group homes use from the list of permitted uses for the code amendment, the recommendation of the law director pending a more comprehensive zoning code update on that particular item. Just a quick summary here of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. On July tenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to approve the proposed code amendments to city council. The commission agreed with the intent to establish a neighborhood zoning district for this particular area and discuss the importance of making sure that the standards were consistent with the other neighborhood districts established throughout the area, throughout the Bridge Street District. Let's see here. The commission had a few concerns with making recommendations to approve zoning code amendments to other provisions in the code that would apply district-wide, particularly with respect to building materials, building heights, parking. And ultimately, they elected to eliminate those from the proposed code amendments, again, pending a more comprehensive update to the Bridge Street District zoning regulations that we're currently processing. And one of the other items I wanted to mention was there was some discussion about the potential elimination of certain building materials, such as fiber cement and wood siding. Again, that was discussed at the June fifth meeting. A written comment had been submitted to city council and forwarded to the commission from three developers who had an interest in various Bridge Street District developments, and they had expressed some concerns with these proposed amendments, indicating that these changes would significantly impact the course of developments that are currently in process. So at their July tenth meeting, the commissioners reconsidered these modifications and, again, determined that the existing code language should remain until further consideration with the additional code amendments for the overall Bridge Street District. Similarly, the commission also elected to clarify the maximum permitted height for certain buildings, allowing up to a total of a maximum of six stories, with increased height to be considered through waivers based on unique circumstances and specific developments. And lastly, the commission discussed the importance, wanted to make clear that a balanced mix of land uses in this district in particular, as well as other Bridge Street District zoning districts, is very important. So at this time, city council approval of ordinance seventy-six fourteen for the proposed zoning code amendment is recommended at the second reading public hearing on August twenty-fifth. And very quickly, just wanted to transition to the proposed zoning map amendment. This is the existing Bridge Street District zoning map with the areas highlighted that are involved in the proposed rezoning. And this map shows the proposed zoning map amendment. Just to point out, it recognizes the future right-of-way associated with the relocated Riverside Drive. And just an overview here. Again, the future parkland on the west side of the relocated Riverside Drive is recommended to be zoned to the Bridge Street Corridor Public District, which is an existing zoning designation that applies to other parkland and other public uses throughout the Bridge Street District, and such as the Dublin Schools, the Sycamore Ridge Park, and things of that nature. The Scioto River Neighborhood District would then be The Scioto River Neighborhood District would then be applied to the land on the east side of the relocated Riverside Drive, including the former driving range site, the Bridgepoint Shopping Center, as well as the former Wendy's Restaurant site at the southeast corner of that intersection, Riverside and one sixty-one. In the ART's recommendation to the commission, the existing Acura and Cadillac car dealerships at the corner of Riverside, I'm sorry, State Route one sixty-one and Dale Drive had retained their existing zoning of Bridge Street Corridor Commercial. Council may recall back in 2012, there was a lot of discussion on the zoning for those parcels at that point in time. However, at the meeting on June fifth, the commission discussed those particular properties, as well as the other properties on the east side of Dale Drive, and preferred that those properties go ahead and be included in the area rezoning to make sure that whatever does happen, that the character development on both the east and west sides of Dale Drive would have the same look and feel. Our intent all along was that when those properties would develop, that they would ultimately rezone to the same zoning district. We just wanted to go ahead and do that as part of this area rezoning. And a representative of the car dealerships did attend the July tenth meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the commission verified that the existing uses provisions of the zoning code would continue to allow the uses to remain as conforming uses. So even under the new zoning, the proposed zoning, their existing rights to transfer tenants, make modifications to their existing properties, expand in line with the existing code provisions, that could continue as it exists today. And lastly, the, again, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval to City Council for the proposed zoning map amendment, area rezoning, at their July tenth meeting. And City Council approval of ordinance seventy-seven fourteen is recommended at the second reading public hearing on August twenty-fifth. Thanks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ray. Any council questions, discussion?
Tim?
I have a number. If you'll bear with me or jump in. I guess let's start with the car dealerships. I guess I'll go sort of address these backwards, or in a backwards fashion, in my mind, anyway. I'd be interested in council's view, legal's view, planning's view. You know, I certainly understand and appreciate and support allowing these uses, albeit in a non-conforming fashion. I guess, you know, what I wonder about is, you know, in the event, you know, insofar as we're talking about future tenants, you know, if, you know, the current dealerships were to no longer operate as they are today. You know, I'm just interested in, you know, is, you know, do we want to limit that? Do we want to see auto dealerships there theoretically in perpetuity? I'm just interested in people's thoughts.
Yeah, it sounded to me like you've given the, you've put them into the new zoning class that if it redevelops at some point in the future, they can redevelop under the code. But they have the right to continue under the current-
That's correct.
-posture that's there, as well as, even if they wanted to change dealerships or whatever, it would still be, they went from a Chevrolet to a Pontiac or whatever, they could do that, if I heard what you said correctly.
That is correct, unless they were to abandon the use for greater than twelve months, and there are standards in the code for what that means.
At which time, then, it would revert back to the overall zoning class, which is probably a better deal than trying to rezone it down the road when a redevelopment timeframe may present itself.
Correct.
I saw, so we hashed this over, what was it, three years ago? When we were coming up with the Bridge Street Code rezoning, residential, commercial, I forget all the codes at the time, but we already talked about all this.
Correct.
So if I hear you correctly, we're just merely preserving what we decided back then.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Rick, if I could comment, I was here that night, and we, it wasn't a car dealership, but there were a bunch of other residents, excuse me, property owners and business people here. And what we told them is that we were going to allow them to continue their business. We weren't going to throw them out. We didn't want to chase them out of town, but that we would give them the option if and when it redeveloped or went out of business for twelve months, and that's been real consistent throughout Bridge Street.
That's right, yeah.
And that's-
That's right. There were more than just car dealerships.
Yeah, there was other businesses. You recall, Mr. Hale was here with a few of them and some other lawyers at the time. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, John?
Get more, Tim?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carry on.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, that's right, you were-
I see in the, in what was presented to us, I guess it's actually in the code, there's a reference to large format retail. And, you know, maybe I don't understand the definition of that, but within this newly designated district, that, can you give me an example of what that would be?
Large format commercial is a building type that would be permitted in this district. It's actually, it was already approved as part of the original rezoning. It's, there are standards in the code to help ensure that it's pedestrian-oriented, that it would be wrapped by other types of uses, it would have a higher degree of transparency, so that it's not just like a standard big-box development.
Okay.
But it's designed to allow big-box to fit into a more urban environment, but-
And is it limited by square footage?
I don't believe it is limited by square footage. I can verify that for the next discussion.
You can let me know next time. Thank you. And then I saw some discussion regarding drive-throughs. Do those remain prohibited and what's being presented to us?
Correct. Drive-throughs are prohibited. One of the potential developers had requested the ability to potentially have drive-throughs, particularly for an eating and drinking facility. That's not something that's permitted in any of the other neighborhood zoning districts, permitted only for banks, and we maintain that consistently for this. The alternative is a developer could bring forward a request for a code amendment for a consideration of a specific drive-through associated with a specific development, and that could be considered on its merits at that particular time. But as far as at this stage, we're not recommending approval of a drive-through use at this point.
Okay. Building height, up to six stories, as of right? Is that correct?
That is what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended. Correct.
Okay, so no waiver necessary for a building to-
It's just for the commercial, I'm sorry, the corridor building type. There's one of the building types that's permitted, and the zoning districts in which that would be permitted, that is the height that would be permitted by right, no higher. The previous code amendment had some exceptions where up to seven and a half stories could be permitted around, for example, two seventy, that area. The commission eliminated those, recommended eliminating those exceptions and making six stories across the board without a separate approval of a waiver from the commission.
Okay. And then the exterior materials, the limitation of the use of wood or hardy plank to send no more than twenty percent, is that applied just to non-residential?
Wood and hardy plank is, as a permitted primary material, only applies to certain building types. More of the residential and scale, if you think about that type of building material, it's not going to be appropriate on a larger office building, for example. So for the apartment buildings, you know, townhomes, those types of smaller-scale buildings, it remains as a permitted primary use in the code.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
My concern is with the, and it looks like this may have been addressed. I think one of the failures of their project that we toured was the small amount of square foot and the very limited ceiling heights, because in that case, the city of Upper Arlington had put a limit on their building heights. So I see where, you know, and I'm really concerned about that because I think it really makes for compressed and cramped space, so. I'm not sure if, and it says story heights, nine feet, fourteen feet, maximum sixteen. And I'm sort of, I'm really, what I'm most concerned with is that we, we limit the building height to the point where we sort of damage the internal enjoyment or use of the space.
Sure. The, the building type requirements of the code are designed to have a minimum and a maximum to partially address that concern. As we're going through the overall zoning code update process, we can work with the commission to take another look at those to make sure they're appropriate and achieve the objective that you're stating.
Yeah, because if you're dealing with eight hundred square feet and you got an eight-foot ceiling, you're almost in a box.
Yeah.
You know?
But I would totally support what John is saying, that we actually want it changed, so we don't have that problem.
Okay, as part of this code amendment.
Yes. I mean, aren't other people in agreement with John's statement?
I agree with that.
We don't want them to discuss it and turn it down. We want it changed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Rick, yeah, just basically a question with respect to the drive-throughs. Could you explain that to me again, please?
Sure. One of the potential developers for some of the projects had requested consideration of the code amendment to include the ability for drive-throughs for eating and drinking facilities. That's not something that's permitted in any of the other neighborhood districts. So the Sawmill Center applying to the Double Village Center area, or conversely, the Indian Run Neighborhood District. They can have drive-through uses for banks, but banks alone, not for eating and drinking. So for consistency's sake and also to ensure that we're really getting that pedestrian-oriented environment, we didn't want to allow it across the board as a permitted use. We let the applicant and potential applicant know that as an alternative, they could bring forward a zoning code amendment that could be considered for a specific project based on, you know, the type of use, type of operation, the appropriate siding on the building, and it could be considered at that point in that forum.
Does it make sense to do a zoning code amendment? I mean, wouldn't that be something that could be a conditional use or a waiver? It seems to me a zoning code amendment is a pretty cumbersome thing.
It's a high hurdle.
Right. When, you know, it may be something pretty innocuous. I mean, if we're going to allow banks to have a, I mean, a drive-through is a drive-through. And some of the ways, I believe that, the way that I understood, you might be able to do a drive-through in an unobtrusive fashion where it wouldn't, you know, a grocery store might have a pharmacy or, you know, something like that. And you might be able to do it such that it wouldn't impact the pedestrian environment at all. You know, I don't know. It, it seems like that cuts off something that we might not want to cut off.
Well, that's right, Amy, and it might also, I mean, as time moves on, because we're sort of thinking past when we think of these sort of things, and going in the future, it might be for bicyclists to come in and grab a cup of coffee real quick, or it might be some other kind of business. So I would like to see something, certainly, let's examine it, but maybe something that's maybe a little less burdensome, but yet still is in keeping with the surrounding area and so forth.
And I think that, like the cementous siding, wood cementous siding item and the drive-through item might be better addressed via the code amendment over the larger Bridge Street District rather than this neighborhood.
It might be.
Going to get that done.
Yeah, that's the next question.
You know, because we, you know, people are ready to build, and so we don't want this sitting out there prohibiting that when then, in two months, we say, oh, well, it's okay. So I would support that it has, it's not prohibited, but that there would be a less cumbersome process, because there will be locations that it is appropriate. And also, that we, we are reducing currently the kind of businesses, then, that require drive-throughs in order to have them there, you know. And what makes a bank different than another establishment, I guess? I'm kind of, you don't need to answer. That's a rhetorical question. But I think that, you know, the other ones then have a right to some kind of a process that is specific to the location where they're located.
Sure. I think part of it was waivers can be granted for many things, but can't grant a waiver to a use, so drive-through is a use. So that was the part that was kind of getting us concerned. But we can certainly take a look at it and bring back for council's consideration, something.
Okay.
Quiet.
You get what we're trying, you know, we don't want to just stick them out there on Main Street, but in such a way that it might be more unobtrusive.
Flexibility.
Yes.
Anybody else? Amy?
I share Mr. Lucklider's concern with the car dealerships and wanting them to be able to operate in perpetuity. I think that it's very appropriate to allow the existing dealerships to maintain their presence, and certainly, we don't want to drive them away. On the other hand, I think that as our zoning district matures and that car dealership may move on to another part of our city, it makes sense to me that we not grant the ability to have a car dealership there, you know, forever. I don't want something sitting there for twelve months, you know, until something else happens. It seems like we should be a little more proactive with regard to that, those particular uses, because as we look at our vision, big picture for this area, those car dealerships don't fit. And so, you know, they're there now, and that's fine. But as time goes on, I think it might be appropriate to address it and address those uses in a different fashion than we did three years ago.
I think that was the point of the conversation with the attorneys two or three years ago. We were taking a property right away, is the way they viewed it. And it wasn't just the car dealerships, it was a number of other businesses. So, I mean, my personal view is that the highest and best use market demand will eventually take care of that. Market forces will deal with it. If there's an ability to build a four or five-story office building or something that's going to generate more revenue for whoever owns that ground, that's probably what's going to happen. And I think what they put in place does it. I hear what you're saying, but to do otherwise is really taking a right away from somebody. At least that's my view.
If I may, Mike, you know, I view it as whether or not we were taking a right away from a present user. I mean, what right are we taking away from some future tenant?
You're taking the right, what you're saying is if he wants to sell it to another brand or whatever and have it remain as a car dealer, you're saying, no, I don't, I don't want that to happen.
Exactly.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
I mean, we debated this.
If you owned that, if you owned that piece of ground, if that was your car dealership, you'd want to have the flexibility to either transfer it to somebody else or to another brand, or take the market forces and take the highest and best use. I mean, I'm playing devil's advocate, but as a business person, that's what I see.
I hear you. Sometimes we have to make hard decisions, and, you know, we'll agree to disagree.
Yeah, agreed.
You know, and too, Mike, in a lot of cities with this kind of pedestrian traffic, it might stay a car dealership, but it's all internal cars, three stories tall, someplace you walk through at nine o'clock at night, just for the fun of it, because you're out on the street. If you see some of these European cities, they have these things downtown, and they're very beautiful. And they, so it's not like it's a bunch of cars parked out on the street. It's a building that contains cars, and you go through them, it's sort of almost entertainment in the evening. And it's usually really your high-end luxury cars.
Amy, anything else?
No, no.
Greg, you want to weigh in on this, Mary Lee? Okay, if not, no other council discussion. I see Mr. Maurer has signed up to provide us with some insights here.
My questions are, the first questions are very micro questions, and they arise out of a passage in a memo. And the rest of my discussion arises out of the piece of legislation itself, as it's now drawn up, micro questions. On the, in the memo, page one, under summary of modifications, line four, the word "place" is capitalized and in quotation marks. And my question is, and it occurs in the following passage, aim of establishing another special place at the heart of the Bridge Street District. So my question is, what place is? Is it, is it some, something, some area, say like a medical center or a theatrical center? Or is it those colored segments we saw on the screen here? What is meant by the word "place"?
The intent is to create the type of place that has a consistent look, character, feel, has a sense of there, there, I guess.
You know, in my world of reading insurance contracts and such, whenever you italicize and put something in a word, it's defined somewhere.
Sure. It was more of an informal kind of planning idea term.
I understand.
Place-making standards, so.
What else, Mr. Maurer?
Okay. I assume, am I right, that the phrase "Bridge Street District" and "Bridge Street Corridor" cover the very same territory? All right.
Indeed.
Right, okay. Now, the, this is one of the most stunning and spinning pieces of legislation I've run across since I've been up here, and I predate all of you. It's, on one level, it looks like, you have faith here. You must have faith, don't you, that this is going to take place?
We do.
Just old-fashioned faith, it's going to-
We're all in, Wally. We're all in.
It's a special place.
So, but it also looks, there's a kind of tension in it for me. It looks like a- It looks like a piece of micromanagement of right down to the last cubic inch in this whole territory. I'm thinking of that endless number of pinpointings in the legislation. And I guess, in the practical sense in which I'm turning, thinking about this is, are you developing a huge bureaucracy to handle all these pinpoints that are in the legislation?
We already have that, Wally.
You do have it? There are only seven of you here.
It's in the attempt of creating that wonderful sense of place.
It's a living, breathing document, Mr. Mauer.
It's what?
And it's a living, breathing kind of document with a lot of flexibility. It's a guideline. And if you, if you really look at this, we're 30, 40, 50 years potentially out to completion. This isn't going to happen in a year or two years. It's...
Now, are there dynamics, are there dynamics in motion right now? For example, people living or having their businesses where they are now, are they thinking of jumping over there? Yeah. All right. Good luck.
Thank you so much, as always. We appreciate that. So with that public testimony, the second reading public hearing will be August 25th, at the August 25th council meeting for both ordinance 76-14 and 77-14. That brings us to ordinance 80-14.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Hall &amp; Associates, Inc. to induce it to retain an office and associated operations and workforce within the city and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it. Thank you, Mr. Michael O'Clery.
Yes, good evening. Hall &amp; Associates is currently located on Emerald Parkway. Hall is an engineering consulting firm which specializes in environmental remediation. The company plans to retain 73 jobs and create an additional six jobs by the end of 2018. Hall has made the decision, after an extensive search, to use the currently unused space that they have in their building currently. The economic development agreement proposed in support of this expansion and retention is a four-year, 10% incentive on withholdings, which is capped at $40,500 for the term of the agreement. And that agreement is contingent upon the execution of a seven-year lease. It's estimated that the city will net approximately $656,212 in income tax withholding over the term of the project. And a member of the company will be here for the second reading.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
No, I'm just glad to see that they're going to remain, especially since they were impacted by the expansion of Tuttle Crossing and all that. It's great that they're going to stay here, because I know they're quite a high-end engineering company.
Exactly. I think it was also a testament to our existing building stock that they felt that their current facility is still up to date and still serves their needs.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? If not, then the second reading public hearing will be August 25th. Thank you. Ordinance 81-14.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Goken America, LLC, to induce it to retain an office and associated operations and workforce within the city and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it.
Mr. Clery?
Okay, so Goken America is a design engineering firm focused primarily on the automotive industry. So obviously, in central Ohio, the significant amount of their work is dedicated to Honda R&amp;D. The company has been headquartered in Dublin since 2004 and currently has 29 employees in Dublin and plans to add an additional 20 by 2019. The positions are comprised primarily of highly skilled engineers and graphic design professionals. And due to the expansion, the company has been considering many real estate options across central Ohio and has decided to purchase a building in Dublin, signaling their long-term commitment to the community. In support of the project, the proposed economic development agreement includes a one-time $10,000 location grant and a five-year, 10% performance incentive on withholdings, which will be capped at $60,000. The city estimates to net approximately $493,830 in income tax revenue over the life of the project.
Okay, very good. Any council questions, discussion? If not, then the second reading public hearing will be August 25th council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Clery.
Thank you.
Ordinance 82-14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute conveyance documents to accept the donation of a 0.686 acre more or less fee simple interest, a 2.359 acres more or less fee simple interest, a 0.148 acre more or less permanent easement, a 0.388 acre more or less permanent easement, and a 0.146 acre more or less permanent easement donated by Ohio University for the property located south of State Route 161 for the extension of Industrial Parkway and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it.
Mr. McDaniel?
Good evening. As stated by the clerk, this ordinance is to accept the donation of land from Ohio University in order that the city construct a new road extending south from the existing roundabout Industrial Parkway and State Route 161 post-road. As you know, Ohio University has begun construction of its new 90,000-square-foot facility that will house allied health services programming and other academic endeavors yet to be announced. This building is being constructed in SubArea 1, which was conveyed to them earlier this year. And they intend to have courses in this building starting in May of 2015. The economic development agreement executed between the city and Ohio University in 2012 required that the university convey back to the city at no cost any right-of-way and/or easements necessary for the construction of public roadways and utilities. This ordinance and the associated conveyance documents, when executed, will memorialize the receipt of the land by the city. And a map of that necessary, those necessary easements were attached to your report. The staff recommends council pass this ordinance as an emergency to ensure the public and safety forces access to the new building upon opening. And the bids on the roadway will be received this Thursday, and staff intends to bring back to you legislation for bid acceptance on August 25th in order to meet the required timeframes. So that's all I have, and I'll do the best I can to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I'll move to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency.
Second.
On the motion?
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
And on the ordinance.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Ordinance 83-14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.027 acre more or less permanent easement and a 0.022 acre more or less temporary easement from Bruce C. Miller and Sharon C. Miller for the property located at 6189 Dublin Road for the construction of a shared-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase III project and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Marsha?
As mentioned in the title, this is for an easement that's needed for the construction of the Dublin Road South bike path. We've been in discussions with the property owner, and we've come to an agreement with the appraised value of $4,740, and we're asking it be passed as an emergency this evening.
Thank you. Any council questions?
I'll move to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency.
Second.
On the motion, Jenny?
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
And on the ordinance.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 84-14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.647 acre more or less permanent easement and a 0.408 acre more or less temporary easement from Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company at the property located on France Road in between Rings Road and Blazer Parkway for the relocation of overhead utilities underground along France Road and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it.
Mr. McDaniel? That doesn't look like Mr. McDaniel.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Hammersmith?
Yeah, we called an audible.
Okay, time's up.
All right. If you have before you this evening, members of council, an acquisition is depicted on the slide of a permanent and temporary easement necessary for the burial of utilities along France Road, which is a project included in this year's capital improvements program. Nationwide was agreeable to the acquisition at the appraised value of $10445, but it also included the donation of a temporary easement. And I will correct myself in a moment. Temporary easement valued at $10,200. Part of the appraised value was actually improvements on the property for which they were reimbursed. Staff recommends that council dispense with the public hearing and adopt this as an emergency measure.
Any questions?
I'll move to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency.
Thank you. On the motion?
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker. Ms. Salee. Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
And on the ordinance.
Ms. Salee. Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Thank you, Nationwide. Ordinance 85-14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to acquire 1.105 acres more or less fee simple interest from Peace Hansen LLC, the spa at River Ridge, at 6570 Riverside Drive and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it.
Ms. Grigsby?
Yes, this ordinance provides for the authorization to acquire the property that's needed for the relocation of the Riverside Drive project that's in the city's CIP project or CIP program. We have been working with the property owner over the last several months and have come to an agreement with the acquisition of the property for $2,150,000. And that includes $1,750 from the appraised value, and the additional costs relate to the relocation and moving costs associated with their move to a new location. And we are requesting that the legislation be adopted this evening as an emergency and so that we can be in a position to move forward with the project early next year.
This is among our last pieces, isn't it?
This should be the last piece for the Riverside Drive relocation.
Just about out of money, Marsha.
I move that we dispense with the public hearing and treat it as an emergency.
Second.
Thank you. On the motion?
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
On the ordinance, please.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Resolution 68-14.
Authorizing the addition of two new members to the Central Ohio Risk Management Association, CORMA, pursuant to Article 5, Paragraph I of the Central Ohio Risk Management Association bylaws.
I'll introduce it.
Mr. Whittington?
Good evening, counsel. The resolution for your consideration is authorizing the addition of the city of Marysville, Ohio and the city of Canal Winchester, Ohio, as new members of the Central Ohio Risk Management Association, also known as CORMA. CORMA is the joint self-insurance pool formed under Chapter 2744 of the Ohio Revised Code, of which the city of Dublin has been a member of since inception in 1997. For the past 17 years, CORMA has provided cost-effective property and liability insurance services to its membership, when in addition, the city of Dublin includes cities of Westerville, Upper Arlington, Pickerington, Powell, Grove City, and Groveport. In order to accomplish CORMA's objective of adding quality members, CORMA bylaws require that new members first be approved by at least two-thirds of the CORMA Board of Trustees, followed by approval by resolution of at least two-thirds of the current members of the city council. The CORMA Board of Trustees has unanimously approved the addition of these cities as new CORMA members. Questions?
Questions, counsel? I have a quick one. You've got some good spread of risk here from Marysville to Canal Winchester, so that's good dispersal. What about the dilution of limits? Are we picking more limits up? Are we diluting by adding two more entities?
Well, actually, we're increasing. We're in the process right now of negotiations.
Because you have a set amount that covers everybody. When you add people, that makes less available. So you're...
Yeah, correct. Actually, we're looking to increase that specific stop-loss. If we do get two new members, we will be increasing that significantly.
That's, I have no other questions. Counsel, anybody else?
No.
We need a vote on the resolution?
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Salee. Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Thank you, Ron. Resolution 69-14.
Adopting a statement of services for a proposed annexation of 2.7 acres more or less from Washington Township Franklin County to the city of Dublin.
I'll introduce it.
Mr. Gundermann? This is kind of housekeeping, isn't it, Gary?
Not really.
No?
Yes, good evening. This is a fairly typical annexation for the Liggett property located just off of Rings Road. This is the start of the process with two resolutions, 69 and 70, right next to each other on your agenda. One is a statement of services indicating the city will provide services should this be annexed. And the second one is a statement on incompatible land uses required for this particular type of process. Also, as part of this packet, there is a request for a fee waiver. It's listed on your agenda under other business. And I do believe this is fairly typical of the situations where we've granted such waivers in the past in that it is reducing the area of a island of township property inside the city boundary. This is the property, as you can see, it's just immediately east of the railroad tracks, north of Rings Road, close to the Amblin area. This is the official petition. You may notice that we have in part of it some right-of-way, partly alley, partly street. None of it has been developed. It's all part of the cornfields now. You see no indication of it whatsoever out in the field. This is roughly the area with an aerial photograph behind it. You can see a little more clearly the area. This does include a small portion of the railroad right-of-way that would otherwise be a strip through the middle of it if it was not included. Favorable action on these resolutions is needed prior to the Franklin County hearing on this item, which is scheduled for September 9th. Fee waiver action can be completed by motion this evening if you so choose. Upon approval by Franklin County, which we would expect, this item would be back to you in approximately three months for an ordinance where you would actually accept the annexation. We have to answer any questions?
Questions? Anything else? Anybody? Vote on the resolution?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Very good. Resolution 70-14.
Adopting a statement regarding possible incompatible land uses and zoning buffer for a proposed annexation of 2.7 acres more or less from Washington Township Franklin County to the city of Dublin, Ohio as required by Section 709.023(c) of the Ohio Revised Code.
Gary? Pretty much...
It's same discussion.
Any questions, discussions? If not, then we'll have a vote on that resolution, please, Jenny.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber. Mr. Peterson. Ms. Salee.
Can your honor, at this time, before you go to the next one, do you vote on the motion and for the fee waiver that he discussed?
With council's pleasure. Want to make a motion to approve the fee waiver?
So moved.
Do a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Jenny?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber. Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
That's consistent with our past practices as well. So, resolution seventy-one dash fourteen.
Intent to appropriate a zero point two zero six acre more or less fee simple interest, a zero point one two two acre more or less permanent easement, a zero point one nine nine acre more or less permanent easement, and a zero point one zero one acre more or less temporary easement from Powamo Limited for the property located along State Route one sixty-one for the construction and extension of Industrial Parkway for the academic drive Phase One project.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel.
Really nothing to add beyond the title, what was read there. Just again, this is similar to ordinance eighty-two fourteen in support of the new road that would also support the new facility at Ohio University. And I think there was a map attached to the report. Do you have any questions? We have any answers?
Thank you. Council questions? Vote on the resolution, please.
Mr. Peterson. Ms. Salee. Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker. Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes. Resolution seventy-two dash fourteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction agreement with Columbia Gas to relocate two gas lines for the Sawmill Road Hard Road Intersection Improvement Project.
I'll introduce it. Mr. Hammer Smith? We're pretty familiar with this, I think.
You should be. And just as the title indicated, nothing more than a construction agreement to relocate gas mains. Total cost, five hundred and ten thousand dollars approximately, and the CIP included about five hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you. Council questions? Vote on the resolution?
Ms. Salee. Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Resolution seventy-three dash fourteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Rumkey of Ohio, Inc. for the collection, transportation, and delivery for disposal of processed solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard waste generated by residential units, municipal facilities, and during special events.
I want to do so. Thank you. Ms. Calacan?
Good evening, council members. The current agreement for collection of solid waste terminates at the end of the year. As such, the consortium members have been planning for the procurement of these services since the beginning of the year. Bids for collection services were opened on May twentieth. Bidders had the choice of bidding status quo, which would maintain the services that we currently have, automated collection and contractor design. We received excellent bids for each of the options which are outlined in the table in your staff report. Consortium members reviewed and discussed the bids extensively throughout the month of June. The consortium representatives indicated at the time that the preference for the majority of the communities was Rumkey's Contractor Design Bid Option A. That was the preferred bid. However, a few of the communities found that the proposed service day schedule was unacceptable. For example, Dublin, the proposed collection day that Rumkey proposed for all three services, which was on Wednesday, which, based on our prior experience, staff would be... or staff believed would be unacceptable to Dublin residents. The consortium members collaborated to modify the proposed service day schedule to meet the consortium members' needs. Therefore, the modified service day schedule that was developed had Dublin Service Day as Monday. The modified service day schedule was discussed with Rumkey representatives at the time. And at the time, they indicated that they would make every effort to accommodate the days of service as proposed by the consortium. Based on that information, the consortium members proceeded with their legislative processes. Dublin staff met with Public Services Committee in later June. And then city council passed Resolution sixty-four dash fourteen on July first, authorizing the city manager to enter into a collection services agreement with Rumkey for the Contractor Design Bid Option A, so long as Dublin Service Day is Monday. Consortium members then received a letter from Rumkey indicating that the service day schedules would not be changed. We followed up with conversations with Rumkey. And Rumkey, later on in the month, confirmed that the proposed service day schedules could not be changed. Primary reason they gave was that there's a couple of communities that initially had planned on accepting the bid for Contractor Design A, and in the end, they ended up going with the status quo. Based on this development, staff determines Rumkey's status quo bid is the lowest and best bid. This maintains the same service specifications as we currently have. The bid price is a nearly nine percent decrease from the current contract price. Therefore, staff recommends council approval of Resolution sixty-four fourteen, authorizing the city manager to accept Rumkey's status quo.
Same days, less money, no change in containers.
Good deal.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. On the resolution, please, Jenny?
Ms. Chennessy-Zurker.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Okay, it brings us to other. We've already done the request for the fee waiver, so that's done. Proposed Resolution sixty-six dash fourteen, amending Section ten. Voting procedures, council rules of order. Jennifer?
Yes. Good evening, mayor, mayor, members of council. We're recommending this amendment to the rules of order. It's in accordance with the discussion at the June twenty-fourth Administrative Committee meeting of the Hall, where we discussed clarifying the voting procedures. To state that an affirmative vote of four members of council shall be necessary to pass any question unless otherwise provided by the charter. Under the rules of order, any amendment needs to be read to council first and then voted upon via resolution at the subsequent meeting. So we would recommend that council introduce and approve the resolution authorizing the revision at the August twenty-fifth council meeting.
It was a very good summary. Appreciate the executive overview. I think there were a lot of good comments that were contributed to by all of council. And a lot of it was just affirming what we've done in the past and making a record of that for the future. So, well done. And we will schedule this for introduction voted August twenty-fifth. Anybody else?
I just had one comment that on page four of four, the first full paragraph at the end says about the personnel board of review could be given the responsible review in these provisions and recommending updates if council so desires. I think that we had made it very clear that we wanted substantive work for this group, which it hasn't been given in many years, and that that is the kind of work that we wanted them to do. That is also earlier outlined on page three of four.
Yes, and there are pending revisions to this chapter that we were planning on bringing forward and having their input, so that should happen in short order.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else? Staff, comments?
Couple items. First of all, there was a detailed report on the Martin Road to Welland Street shared use path that was included in your packet. And basically, from the information that was provided, the residents in the area, there are more of those that are against the project than are in support of the project. And based upon that, staff would recommend that we not proceed with the project. If council so desires, we can, and we can provide for a public input session at the next council meeting. So we're waiting on council's direction on that.
I don't think it's necessary from everything I've heard.
Well, the only thing, mayor, that all the people that were here in the chamber earlier that left were here on that issue. And they were pretty much... They all had their green ribbons on. They were unanimously against it. I did get a couple of calls. I interacted with a lot of these folks on a number of different occasions. I've been out there a lot. I went to the public input session. My only concern is the people that are against it are aware. It was a little bit confusing even to me. I didn't know whether it was going to be on the agenda for the next council meeting, or we needed to request that it be put on the agenda. I am just the person that always believes more input is better, and I don't know... I know that they got up and left because they were under the impression it was now going to be put on the agenda in two weeks.
And that's fine if council wants. I mean, our thought at this point, based upon what we had heard, is that we would not proceed with the project, and so therefore, a public hearing was not necessary.
What would we normally do? Would we have a resolution to that end, or would we just say we don't want to do it?
Just won't do it, and we take it out of the CIP and we don't move forward?
We can put it on as a resolution or something at the front end of a meeting somewhere if you want to have those people go through that process.
But isn't their intent that they don't want it done, right, Greg?
The overwhelming majority of them do not want it done.
So if we say we're not going to do it, then...
They'll be thrilled.
I'm all in favor. Anybody else?
Yeah.
I think we all agree with that, Greg.
Okay, so that's the end of that one.
And we'll provide information to all the residents, those four and against the project.
My only concern, I talked to a couple of people today on the phone that called me up, where the people that voted that were in support of it. And I just said, look, if it's not on the agenda, it may be on the agenda in two weeks. I don't know what will happen. It's not tremendously clear.
We can contact them and let them know of the discussion this evening. And they're always welcome to come and sign up and speak under items not on the agenda.
That's fine.
That works for everybody?
Will the city communicate with everyone and let them know that we are not going to be going forward?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, then.
Second item, there was a memo in your packet on... It was titled June Digital Communications. And one of the things, just to highlight, tracking of projects. There's information out there now from development projects. As we receive them, there's information listed out on our website, so you can see all of the projects and where they are in the process. And then also, one of the things that we've been working on with regard to our capital improvements program is getting information out on the website that shows where all the projects are. And the goal will be eventually that you can click on the icon and get detailed information as to the status of the project and when things will be happening in your neighborhood. And then as we complete those projects, that information will be out there as well. So it's something that we wanted to mention publicly so that it would be televised so the residents are aware of our efforts in trying to keep information for them. The adult family home issue, there was a packet of information provided to council. And we plan on contacting the residents to let them know that it will be scheduled for council's agenda at the next council meeting on August twenty-fifth as a second reading.
Another well-prepared document, very good executive summary there. Thank you.
Is the public going to be provided a copy with that report in advance of the meeting?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Very good.
And there was also questions on the Irish Festival and some of the numbers and attendance. The attendance, we are estimating somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-eight thousand, which is down a little bit from last year, which last year was our record year. The overall revenue is probably going to end up being about the same. We actually saw a decrease in our beverage sales by about nine and a half, nine point six percent. And that corresponded with the ticket sales. The ticket sales ended up not showing that much because we increased the price from ten dollars a ticket to twelve dollars. But actually, if you look at the numbers, they were down as well by about the same percent. So fewer people probably in attendance overall. But the revenue overall will be about the same because of things like sponsorships and the vendor permits that we sell and the food licenses and things like that. But we'll have additional and a more complete report to council in the near future.
Lucky with the weather, too, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, Saturday hurt. Saturday, when it rained till three o'clock, made a big impact.
But it was big that evening.
Yeah, it was nice. Yeah, it was packed that evening. The other item, too, is just to say thanks to Jenny for her efforts in stepping in tonight when Anne's absence and also with Judy's accident.
If Anne's watching from England, she may be trying to get back here quick.
Either that or stay away.
And the other item on the Irish Festival, just to mention staff and recognize all of their efforts leading up to the festival and during the festival. The issue of rain when it occurred and the fact that how quickly they responded to getting mulch out. I heard from numerous people throughout the day that they were really impressed at what our staff was able to do. Things as simple as trash. One of the things that... I had a gentleman tell me that he's responsible for managing a much smaller event, but that was the thing that impressed him the most, was the fact that we keep our trash picked up. So there's a lot of little details and a lot of thought that goes through all the planning of this. And all the staff that's involved should be recognized for all of their hard work that goes into having a successful event.
That's pretty much everybody here, too. At the end of the day, everybody contributes something.
Yeah, pretty much, across the city.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Amy, planning and zoning?
Yeah, the Planning Commission met last Thursday and had two items on the consent agenda. One was bold, which was Avondale Woods. It is a, for us, recently, a pretty large neighborhood in the very southwest portion of the city, so that'll be coming to us in the not-too-distant future of rezoning and preliminary development plan. The Spa River Ridge relocating was an item on the consent agenda. I know that they are going to be relocating into the former Olmsted Building, which is over on Wall Street. It's the building. It has a fountain and a big public art presence in that building. There's a... On the fountain, there are dolphins out in the front of it. It's...
It was a high-tech computer thing, wasn't it, for banks or...
I thought it was a data center for credit unions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they did software. They developed software for the credit unions.
Anyway, they're going to relocate into that building, but they did a really good job. And I think it's staff's behest with working with the residents nearby. And so there were no objections, and it was a very smooth transition, I think, for the folks at the Spa River Ridge, which I know we were all interested in. So hats off to staff. And the folks at the Spa River Ridge did a really good job with their presentation, very thorough about their business and how it operates. Crawford Hoing had their first approval, I guess. One thing that issue that came up that night, it was raised by me based on discussions that we had had at council months ago. And that was also brought up by Crawford Hoing that evening. The presence of the bike cycle tracks on each side in the shopping corridor. I know Crawford Hoing has some heartburn about that, and I do as well, having that bike infrastructure there mixed in with the pedestrians, mixed in with the outdoor dining. So I think that, you know, I don't know, when it comes to us for the area rezoning, I'm guessing that we'll need to have some more discussion, but I think we should think carefully about that bicycle infrastructure. It's part of the oval loop track through the whole historic... I'm sorry, through the whole Bridge Street District. And of course, it intersects with the bridge, which is an important connection. But I think we need to think about that bicycle infrastructure and where it belongs. I will say that my colleagues on the Planning Commission wholeheartedly disagreed and thought that that bicycle infrastructure should remain there, even if we did have to move buildings back and so forth. So, anyway, that was an issue that came up and was discussed.
Good. Mayor Lee, finance?
Yes, we had a finance committee meeting earlier this evening. Maybe it was yesterday. No, it was at six o'clock tonight. And I'm happy to announce that Dublin continues to be solid in its finances. And even though we've had some employers announce that they will be moving elsewhere, we've had as equal, if not greater, number of new employers moving in or increasing existing people. And I think our financial situation, we should both thank economic development, our city manager, and our finance department for managing our funds so successfully. I also would like to recommend the committee, from the committee, speaking on behalf of the committee, for the Dublin Arts Council to receive a twelve thousand dollar bed tax grant. Request that we heard this evening, which you heard David give his presentation a few weeks ago regarding the Eddie Adams Photography Exhibit that will begin Memorial Day of two thousand and fifteen and be up until September eleventh of two thousand and fifteen.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Thank you.
I guess we're going to need a vote?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Rick, admin?
Yes, I know everybody on council is aware of this, but just for the record, through a competitive bid process, the search firm of Ralph Anderson and Associates was selected to conduct the comprehensive search for Dublin's new city manager. The project director for the engagement is President and CEO, Ms. Heather Rensheller, a native of Northwest Ohio. The city council has begun the process to develop the characteristics and attributes desired in the new city manager. This information and supporting documentation will be made available online for interested individuals, as well as the public has developed further details, I'm sorry, on the process. A more specific timetable are being developed and will be announced at a later date.
Very good. Am I missing any other committees? Everybody good? Not... We'll go on to council roundtable then. Greg?
Oh, thank you, mayor. I just would echo Marsha's comments and thanks to the staff. This is our first meeting since even the Fourth of July celebration. And to have two events like that, what this city puts on for the Fourth of July and then some six or seven weeks later turns around and does it once again for the Irish Festival, I'm sure it stretches the staff to capacity and they've once again exceeded everyone's expectations. So they should be proud of themselves. I certainly appreciate all the hard work. Just one other thing, I was saddened to learn when I got here tonight that Officer John Wright is retiring from the police department. John had my back when I was served as magistrate in Mayor's Court. He's had my back sitting here on council. And there have been a couple of different...
Right there, literally, he's got your back.
There have been a couple of occasions in my neighborhood where I had to call for some help, and John was the guy that showed up. And his dedication to this city is extraordinary. How many years have you been here now? Twenty-five years. And he will be missed. I will miss him, and I just want to thank him for his service. I appreciate his dedication. That's all, mayor. Thank you.
Amy?
I wanted to call council's attention and ask about the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard extension, the request for a grant of some sort. And I just wanted to clarify that this project is not on the CIP, except for the beyond. And if we were to be successful in obtaining that grant, do we absolutely have to build it on that timeframe? Or is there something... What I want to make sure is that this is a project that is serving Dublin and Dublin residents. And I think the way that the environment now, it would not be serving Dublin. It would be serving a region that... It would be serving a region that, frankly, needs to think about their development patterns before they count on us to build them a road. So those are my questions about this.
Well, I think it does serve the region and also serves the city. I think the traffic in the area, Warner Temple and Avery Road, we're experiencing issues and delays, and the roadway would help us as well as the region. If we are successful, we always have the ability to not accept if we change our mind at any point in time. And the funds would not be available until 2019. The one thing is if you do turn down a grant or don't accept it, I don't know how then you're looked upon for future grants. But it is something that we do have the option to make that decision later.
So this is a long-term project. I'm wondering if it might be that, would TIF funding be paid for this?
Yeah, we'll be funding this out of the Nationwide or the Rings France TIF. That's where that, the road is currently programmed to be funded.
Okay. All right. Well, I do think that this is a project that we need to think very carefully what the consequences would be, because I think it's a case additionally that if we build it, they will come. And it would put a lot of development pressure westward that I don't think, well, I'm not sure we're necessarily... Well, I know we're not ready for it now, and we're not desirous of it. You know, 2020 is a long way off, and certainly something to be thought about down the road, but I did want to highlight that.
You know, Amy, I read this, and I had concerns as well, maybe for different reasons. I'd like to see more, maybe staff could put together for us, please, the necessity for this beyond this one piece of paper that we received.
We can look to see what additional information would be helpful. And the one thing, too, to keep in mind, if we get the additional grant funds, one of the options that we can look at is modifying the existing TIF that would allow us to extend Tuttle Crossing further to the west, which we're going to be needing at some point in the future. So it is a way to provide additional funding for the long term.
I guess one thing that irritates me is that the Avery Road down there, there appears to be a lot of Big Box and whatever coming that direction where the Gulf Driving Range is located. And that, that's Columbus, is it not?
Yes, that's in Columbus.
So, you know, and then you look at the Hayden Run Corridor and Cos Gray and what happened out there. I mean, you put a car wash on the corner of the major intersection, who'd go figure? And then we seem to be, we seem to be, you know, supporting the habits, so, by way of the roadway and...
The one item with regard to the driving range, they have had proposals for Big Box, and they've withheld approving that. And part of, part of some of the discussions that we've had with the city of Columbus is their preference is that it not be retail, and that they believe having this road extended provides better reasons for it to develop from a commercial standpoint versus a retail standpoint.
Is there any way to get an if-then kind of statement?
You know, we can, we can see what we can do. I mean, that's maybe difficult. I'm not sure.
I guess I don't understand. They're saying that they would prefer that it not be retail. Then isn't there a municipality, just like we are, and we have complete, almost complete discretion when, in zoning matters? And so if they have a community plan, which they do, that calls for office, then it's up to them to say what they would like on that corner and to approve or not other uses. So I guess, as I said, I don't want to say that this is a good idea, and I don't think it's a good idea. And again, I've had a lot of folks, you know, ask me, "When, this isn't going to happen anytime soon, is it?" Because they're concerned about the development pressure that would be placed. And, you know, we've got Avondale Woods going down there, and I know that they've worked a little bit with the city of Columbus on their signals for their development and such, but there's already some high-density housing that's on the corner there. See, the southwest corner of what will be Tuttle Crossing Boulevard and Avery Road. And it's just going to be a real mess down there unless Columbus really gets a handle on their development. So anyway, enough said.
On the flip side of that, in terms of what, how it might be able to help, at one point, we talked about it moving up and going to the Tech Center, to Iderman Road, in that part of the world.
Eventually, yes.
Yeah, so give me some information on that at the next meeting.
And that's what, when I mentioned the further extension of Tuttle to the west.
So it's all part of what Rick's, Rick's point was?
Let's kind of get an all-inclusive kind of report and see what all this really means.
And that's why we put this memo in this packet, because we need to have legislation the next time.
It was kind of a surprise.
And we knew there were some concerns on council's part that have been expressed. But we see this as an opportunity, and it's something looking out for the longer term.
So we hadn't talked about it for, I would guess, at least two years, and then all of a sudden, we get the memo. So that kind of took me, took me aback, but I understand. So we'll look for more information. Mary Lee, please.
Wait, I've got, sorry, got a couple more items. Speeding neighborhoods, speeding in neighborhoods, I should say. I've heard from a neighborhood that they've got some concerns about speeding. We've had the speed trailer out there and so forth. I'm curious, we used to have a program where the residents could get a radar gun and be trained by the police department, and they could stand there and sort of unobtrusively run radar. I think this might serve a couple purposes. The neighborhood firmly believes that there is a speeding problem, and the, the speed stealth stat shows that there is not. And so there's this discrepancy and some really unhappy residents. And so I'm wondering if there's a program like that, we might be able to get that disconnect solved.
Well, I would, I guess I'd say technically there is still a program. The problem is, it has been offered so many times, and neighborhoods have not taken the opportunity to use it. It's really kind of fallen into the column of, it's just not, you know, used that often.
Right.
We can talk offline and discuss what neighborhood, I think I know what neighborhood you're talking about, but we could, we could talk to them about that.
Okay. I would appreciate that. And then the last thing, the Dublin Mid-Century Neighborhood had requested curb and gutter. And it was my understanding that a cost estimate for that was going to be presented as part of our CIP. And I know that they'll be looking for that, and I didn't see it in my binder, but I may be missing it somewhere.
I know there was, we'll have to look. I know there was information that engineering submitted that had the cost by the different streets for the curb and gutter. So we'll go back and look to see if it, if the project's listed or not.
Okay, yeah. We did get a memo, and I just, it wasn't any place in the CIP. And I just wanted it there for our consideration, not necessarily that we would approve or not. But I know the neighborhood's real interested in that, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lee.
I, too, want to thank the staff for the Irish Festival. I'm sorry to hear the numbers were down, but I thought it was a great, run extremely well. And I thought the staff did a remarkable job, as you stated, with the rain and how to fix that area. In fact, a number of people mentioned to me, "Gosh, it's not even muddy after we had that rain," you know, because they worked on it so closely. And I guess I wanted to point out also that I went to the DAC Sciota Concert last night, and our staff also work there, you know? They don't just work for the particular activities that we're putting on, but for other groups in our community that are using the parks and areas that we own. So they're always working, you know? And I would like to just say thanks to all of them, too, because they are the service people and the people that are, you know, putting in a lot of extra time to make sure that our residents have a good time, and it's clean, and it's picked up all the time. And the police officers as well, to make sure that we're safe in those kind of environments. And I think people look for that, you know, and they're, they like that people are there. We had a memo in our, about Washington Township. Do you want us to deal with that, or?
It's something that we'd had conversations with council a few months back, and we're still working with representatives from the township, getting additional information. And so we'll bring that back to council.
You're putting some numbers together in terms of what the cost would be and the amount of labor that would be required?
Yes.
And I understand, if I understand it correctly, that they are going to pass that along at no cost, other than we would have to maintain.
Correct.
Okay.
That's been our discussion.
And then wanted to clarify a little bit about the I-270-33 interchange project update, the arts element to it. How much money are we saying that that's costing now? And is there an expectation that 100% of it is going to be taken out of bed tax?
Yeah, the, I'll start, and then Megan can comment. But the amount of information that's shown in the memo, the $300-plus thousand out of the 500 and some in design, all relate to the art. And a lot of what was needed for the art was the design work, and then the other portions are incorporated into the project with that all. Yeah, the artwork is actually an incidental cost to the construction of the retaining walls. So ODa won't be separating out that cost and charging us for that. So there's zero cost attributable to the art for Dublin.
But I know another council member asked me, too, it, so what is the $2 million?
Aesthetics.
So what's that?
Aesthetics, such as the landscaping, that's going to be in the infield areas of the interchange. There's other items like painting of the guardrail to match the Dublin color.
But that's not going to be taken out of bed tax.
Other aesthetics aside from the art.
Is that bed tax-driven or not?
No.
That's not coming out of there? They kind of alluded to that they'd get as much as possible out of bed tax. Our balance is $2.5, $3 million or whatever. I just want to make sure we didn't exhaust bed tax balance.
No, we're not. I mean, the intent is that this will be funded through, a lot of it will be funded through the TIFs that have been identified. But yeah, the art that's coming out of the bed tax is the $300-plus thousand.
Wonder if the township could help with that? They've got all this road and bridge money, and they've got no place to spend it. Two miles of roadway or whatever.
We'll have to ask them.
Yeah. Are they back there somewhere? Yeah, maybe we can bring that up later. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Tim?
Thank you. I'd just like to echo the positive sentiments that have been made with respect to staff and also all our volunteer residents that contributed to both the Fourth of July and the Irish Festival. You know, I know all of us, with respect to both events, hear a lot of positive comments. And yeah, it's, Mary Lee points out, Sunday at Sciotas as well, that, you know, staff from top to bottom, all across the board, certainly worked very hard. They certainly have a busy summer, and hopefully, some of them are able to schedule some well-deserved vacations.
It was a long recess, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, yeah, thank you.
John?
Yeah, I agree with everyone's comments on the Irish Festival. I do try to make it a point to go out and talk to every vendor, especially this time, because my wife was out of town for three days, so I had plenty of time to do that. And it was really interesting. There was, only four vendors shared with me that their sales were just a little bit under last season. And everybody else said, "Love it." And there was one that, because of a move in the, how the children's thing was displayed, probably cost him some sales. But they said, again, in total, that this is the best put on, best organized. They're taken care of better than any other place. And of course, it is the biggest three-day Irish Festival in the world. And we also hear that, again, for the Memorial Tournament, that people are taken care of there, and they're treated well. And I think, just listening to the players, that it's also a tournament that is considered first in their minds in quality of care and in organization and in the quality of the course. So again, congratulations, everybody. And I just want to say that, Tim, I enjoyed mopping tables with you, Sarah.
What a fine job you did.
Yeah. So thank you.
Thank you, John. Rick?
Yeah, just one thing, Mary Lee, earlier tonight, that Finance Committee, we were talking about the age of most veterans here in Dublin. I have something from social media that shows some rather young veterans that were actually attending the Dublin Irish Festival. Two brothers, Jamie and Kevin, and their sister, are recent graduates of Dublin Sciota High School. And each year, their last name is McAnoney, and they attend the Irish Festival each year. It's sort of like their homecoming. One is still on active duty, the other two have served or are in duty and have left. And it kind of struck me that, you know, maybe we ought to, the Memorial Tournament acknowledges veterans on, I think it's on a Wednesday or something like that during the tournament, but maybe we could do something at the Irish Festival for particularly folks like this, some kind of Veterans Appreciation Day. Not necessarily looking for this expenditure of money or anything, but maybe we could do a little something to acknowledge the veterans here in the community, because there are, obviously, some kids that are just coming back. And I think it might be a good idea to maybe consider that, so.
Staff can come up with some ideas, perhaps.
Yeah, and the one thing, I mean, we do have a reduced fee amount for the military, but we can take a look. There are other options.
Very good. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay. I've had a number of meetings over the last, and a couple weddings, in fact, as well. But met with John Hager, with Dana McDaniel, who's the Director of Finance for CareFusion, working together on some economic development and retainage and hopefully growth. Got another meeting with Nestle tomorrow with Dana, and this is that program we talked about, trying to get together with some of the CEOs, executives of the companies. There was an email that went out. I'd encourage you all to sign up or get involved, or it was really a good meeting. And I think they really appreciated the, they really appreciated the fact that an elected official had taken the time to go out and meet with them and be involved. Irish Festival was great, Fourth of July with great concert, great weather. We were honored to have Senator Rob Portman on hand for the opening ceremonies. Spent some time with staff and went around. He was there at least two hours, seeing the sights and so forth. We also had Stephanie Coonsey, Representative Stephanie Coonsey and her husband Matthew, and Representative Mike Duffy and his wife Lindsay. We had good representation there. I'd also like to thank everybody, Rick and Admin and staff for all the help with the selection, for the, for the search firm. There was a lot of effort and work that went into pulling all those pieces together, and we've done it on a, on a very fast-track and timely basis. So thanks to Admin for all that. Finally, a reminder that September is designated as Distracted Driving Month. I know the city has supported staff's efforts with respect to enforcement, education, Chief Hein, Hein, you've been involved with that as well. And I know there's a lot of initiatives that will be forthcoming here as we move into September with the schools and a whole wide range of age groups as we talk about that issue. So with that, we'll stand adjourned.